Thank you, Jennifer.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this regular meeting of our prior town council's order. Today is Monday, June 12th at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councillor Deneau.
Here.
Councillor Cooper.
Here.
Councillor Tonner.
Here.
Councillor Burnett.
Here.
Councillor Grinstead here, County Councillor Lynch.
Here.
And Mary Mead.
Here. And I would like to begin by acknowledging that the land on which we are gathering is the traditional unceded territory of the Anishnaapi people. Selon the nation has been present on this land for thousands of years, long before the arrival of the European settlers. We are grateful to be present on this territory. I have the adoption, we're in second year for the adoption of the amended agenda, please.
It resolved at the amended agenda for the regular meeting of council day of Monday, June 12th, 2023.
County Councillor Lynch and Councillor Burnett's favor. That's right, too. There's an amendment to the closed session material, is that right?
That's right, for the second closed session, item 18B under Lancelot, we've got Galvin Street as another.
Okay, any disclosures of community or interest? Councillor Cooper.
I declare a community interest in item 12A and 15A, item one, on June 12th, 2023 council agenda. I'm making this declaration because I live in close proximity to the subject lands.
Okay, sorry, that was 15A and.
Sorry, 12A and 15A of the bylaws, item one. Chills, videos.
Cooper, any other disclosures? None. Any questions on previous council? Didn't know. And could I have the adoption of minutes previous?
The minutes of the regular meeting of council listed under item 7A in the agenda to adopt.
Over in the center on that place, Councillor Deneau, Councillor Tonner. They run that carried. Awards, delegations and presentations. We have two delegations tonight. The first one is going to be the Armire Skateboard Association, and I believe Luke is going to be presenting on their behalf.
Yes.
Come on up, Luke. Welcome, welcome.
Okay. This is fine right here.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Luke Sheldrick, and I'm presenting on behalf of the Armire Skateboard Association. Before I even proceed, I just want to say that like two years ago, we presented to the older council on Zoom. And since then, things have been going very well. We're super thankful to be working with Graham. It's been going really well. Holding different events and working with the talent has been very rewarding. So right away, just want to say thank you. It's been awesome, and we're excited to continue. So. Continue on here. So yes, that's our logo, and our goal is to foster community through promoting skateboarding. Every kid is at home in the park. It's just a little slogan I thought sounded nice because that's really what we're going for, targeting all children and making sure that everyone has access to sports. And a real big facet of that for us is people of all demographics. Because access to sports is typically aimed at those who have greater income and the more vulnerable people in society should also have access to sport. And this targets that. And there are other benefits, but that is a very big part of it for us. Okay, moving forward. So the contents, I just want to quickly provide our go over what's going to be in this for you guys. So what drives us? We're going to introduce the ASA, the board, where we come from, things like that, what we do, why we are an asset to the town. Why skate parks matter, what the ASA has done so far, opportunities and goals, that's going to cover our goals, but also opportunities for the association while working with the town and what the future could bring all of us working together. The steps forward, what's required to achieve those goals, and then lastly, of course, what we're asking for. So. This is sort of three tenants of what we're all about. So community, of course, we're looking at working for and with the community. And we've demonstrated that through the past. I think I'll cover that more throughout the presentation, but just to highlight a few things that we've done. A lot of fundraising, Jane has been doing an amazing job. We've raised over $15,000. A lot of that is back into the events we've held, as well as purchasing skateboards, ads. And yeah, we do, we purchase our own insurance for the events that we hold. We purchase pizza when we don't have donors, or sometimes we have partial donations, but we purchase the pizza, the treats, like drinks, ice, snacks. Sometimes we're even purchasing prizing so that we can give more prizing to the kids. And yeah, so that's, and like I said, I might cover more of that later. Use empowerment, so that is targeting kids of all ages. We want to make kids feel, yeah, fulfilled. That is really a goal of ours. Coming to our events, we're trying to make them feel, yeah, empowered. And it works, but not just for the little children, but also teenagers, because anyone that's been to our events has seen the other skateboarders who are getting their volunteer hours, working, learning from us how to teach youth. And I definitely feel like that's empowering to them, like they do have smiles on their faces. Like, and you do see, at the end, I've had teenagers come up to me and say, that felt really cool, like teaching kids how to skateboard. And I think that's really cool. Yeah, so program development as well. We aim to. Yeah, we're working with Graham currently, right now, to develop a program that we can offer four week sessions for teaching, and we would be one of the first communities that I know of that would be sort of creating that. There's, when we're looking for information on it, there isn't much, and even that is kind of where we're at with the snag, is seeking insurance. Because we've had to, we're using a broker right now, and we've been through three different insurance companies that were unable to get insurance. So had we got insurance last week, last Monday, would have been our first night of our session. And we have coaches ready to go, and we're looking to have paid positions for teenagers. So and kind of framing it similar to swim, if you want to think of it as a program. Job opportunities, the same as the teachers in the pool, we're looking for that for teens. And we would literally be sort of writing the book on that. So our prior would be paving the way for other communities to see such thing. And we are seeing people from other communities such as Kentville, as far as Belleville, the Quebec side. Camera, yeah, people are coming to these events and we're seeing continuously upwards of 80 to 100 kids at every event that we go. So I'm not going to go through everyone there, but do you guys have it on your computers?
Yeah.
I just want to highlight sort of more than just like what we do, but just the amount of experience there is amongst our board in business ownership. Like Jeremy's a contractor, he used to own a snowboard and skateboard shop. We have educators, Brian was a, was a rep, so he has countless contacts in this, in the skateboard industry. So we bring not just experience, but also resources, but like personal resources, so that when these projects, when we're thinking of these projects, we have people to talk to that are in the industry and can guide us to utilize different grant opportunities, ensuring that the park is done well. And yeah, I think that highlights it. And I definitely want to touch on Troy is an amazing, he's been building all of the ramps for the town with each year, we've had a bit of money from them, and we've been raising money, and he's donated all of his time, and often some of his own resources as well. So, yeah, that's amazing. So why skateboarding is an important sport in every community? So as I mentioned, accessibility, accessibility, but I'll dive into that a bit more. It's, it's affordable, it's $150 to buy a skateboard and for children, unless they're snapping them, that's going to last them years. Like I didn't bring a skateboard until I was over the age of 20. If they're riding it in the rain, maybe they're going to need to get new bearings or a new board, but really, $150 can go a long way here. At this age, they're getting two, three years, no doubt, and they can do it anywhere. They don't need a parent to drive them to and practice. It's right here in their community. And I believe that if there's infrastructure, which is what we're talking about creating, that it would, they would continue to stick with that sport and then gain the same benefits of organized sports. So mentorship and leadership, that's also what I'm talking about. Every kid at skate park is gaining access to older people who share the same interests. There's no different leagues, there's nothing like that. So they're seeing people that they can look up to within their community that share their interests. Community. So again, it's a place where they can feel at home outside of their home, and I think that's really important. We don't need to dive into the reasons, but I think people can understand what I'm saying there. And then skills and discipline, that's more into the general benefits of athletics and taking sports seriously and skateboarding these days is not like it used to be. The people who are good at skateboarding are online promoting cross training, they're promoting weightlifting, healthy eating. Most of them, most of the old guys that used to maybe be promoting partying or promoting being sober, how, and they're skateboarding early to their 40s and are still doing it. So it's really important to see it as, and I love sports, so like that's when I speak about that, and I, I'm speaking about it as the benefits of, like I say, discipline, mental health. The rewards of learning a new trick or practicing and seeing the benefits, and then those life skills carry on into so many different projects in life, or just when you go to school or do it, going to do a trade, you see the benefits that carry on into people's lives and on being a teenager. Benefits of a proper skate park. So it's a location for local skateboarders to practice, that's key, or, and then moving on to us having a place to teach lessons, run camps and events, and that definitely is an opportunity. A great, great example is Gatno Skate. They have incredible support from their community, federal, provincial grants, and they're running, one person is, it's his profession. I'm not looking for that profession for the record. But if we reach that point, there's, he's, he's literally running, he's made us a career for himself, running camps and programming for Gatno Skate, and it's, it's where we're sort of looking to. And I've been speaking to him about these sort of things, and it's, it's awesome. And then I want to quickly touch on this, but prevents the criminalization of youth. So this is the dark side of what I was talking about, where you don't have a location for kids to feel comfortable to skateboard, you immediately put them on the wrong side of the law, and these kids that are trying to do a sport are exposed to being, having altercations with the police, whereas you've got people, you know, no one's telling someone to not play hockey at the outdoor ring. If you have kids that are 13, 14, already on the wrong side of the law, that those negative interactions can carry forward later in life and have them viewing authority the wrong way and just perpetuates the issue that we're already talking about. It can attract people from out of town, so ask anyone who skateboards, we're often, and this includes Jane. How many times have you driven two hours to a skate park? Okay, so the people who have, it will attract people to the community. And then, yeah, it's, we want to grow the sport, we want to prove local talent, skateboarding is an Olympic sport now, and if we're again, I think it'd be very cool for Armire to be one of the channels that's actually at the forefront of something that is going to be growing. And we could be having a development program for athletes that are taking this seriously and, and moving, moving forward with it. And I think there is potential for that. So our accomplishments, I've mentioned that we raised 15,000. I kind of dipped into this, I'll just skim over it, but yes, we use, we use the funds for our events, snacks, skateboards, and rising new ramps, as I also said, Troy has done a ton, we're using some of our funds, and then some of what's allotted through the budget each year. Now, we're trying to not go too wild there, so that there's more for the, the big picture later on. And yeah, thank you for the helmets as well. That's been serving us really well. A lot of kids are wearing the helmets, we make sure they're all aware about the events. We've gotten a lot of kids on skateboards and a lot of kids really interested in it, loving it. We sponsored four children through the TAP program this year. We targeted the ones that had skateboards on their list, so we got the rest of the things on their list as well. And yeah, we've helped I think most of 10 events now, and our last one had 100 waivers signed. That's not really like the parents that were there inside the Nixmith Center. So, and that was amazing. So thank you again for that, and thank you for coming. That was nice to see you there. And then last ball, this is the next slide, but we ran a pilot program. Basically, we didn't really intend it to be a pilot program, but it basically turned into a pilot program for what we're hoping to do for the lessons programming. So that's one, and that's not even, that's just one of the sessions, one of three sessions for one night at the outdoor ring, the Rink of Kings. So yes, last fall, we were just, we wanted to offer free skate lessons. We decided to do it for four consecutive weeks in the, in October. And we just posted just a quick little for interest thing, and the I think it got over 100 likes and tons of comments, and then we realized, whoa, we better have registration. So we posted that we were going to have registration to kind of get an idea of who was coming, age groups, get them preorganized and sort of different time slots, so we wouldn't be overrun. And that registration filled with 50 participants in two hours. So then every week subsequently increased, we asked more coaches, we got a little more organized, and every week we added more people. And they continued to, registration would fill within two hours, people were on waiting lists. And then by the last one, we decided, okay, let's try to not have, not have to close it, we'll cap it at 100. And we still had to have a waiting list at 100 people. We had three 30 minute sessions and fully organized by different age groups and skill levels. And that's another neat thing that we've been doing is sort of, like I say about the developing a framework, we kind of have begun to allow like again with swimming, it's, it's, are you at the point where you're standing on a board, or are you able to push? And we sort of have level one, one, two, three, intermediate, one, two, three, and we're starting, already starting to develop a bit of a framework, and we can see how it could, could work in the future. So yeah, summary of 2023 events, we've just done one so far, but it blew our minds, we had 100 participants right away. And then again, all ages, and it's amazing to see the parents with their little, little children, or the kids just ripping around. There's some familiar faces here that are definitely multi-sport athletes from the regent that have been here, been this, our skate nights. So there's images of one of the evenings. So opportunities and goals, corporate sponsorship is definitely an opportunity. That's a conversation that I'm on the right, I was having, I asked for permission to share this, but it's an Instagram conversation I'm having with a gentleman from Montreal that is the owner of a park building company called Patiell Skate Parks. And as you can see in that, it's saying that that park is totally free just because of one rail that is, says deja d'air on it. And then on that, in the gold on the right side of the screen there, there's a little, that's like an emblem into the quarter pipe. That's the logo for a gold mining.
The gold mining?
A gold mining corporation. So that is fully covered through, through that. So there are opportunities. If we're taking the right steps forward, and we're willing to do the work to try to find these sponsorships. And also there are countless, like I know we're all familiar with the trillion grant, and sometimes the town has only so much capacity to, to work for it. But as a, as a nonprofit, we can, we can apply separately, and when we have a location and we have the plans in place, those are, those are funds that we can get. I have, I have a ton of experience writing grants personally as well, having run my, my personal business, which is an organic vegetable park, just. So. Local sponsorship as well, like I would be shocked if the, while we're moving ahead, someone like Kavanaugh's wasn't going to give us some price, some, some price breaks on in-kind donations from concrete or rebar, or also if the builders, this is a little more of a gray area, but if the builders are letting us donate time. Community can help with more simple things, things like that, excavation, I'm sure, like there are countless ways once we're moving ahead to, to get local sponsorship as well. As I mentioned, recreation grants, and then also programming grants. We just missed one this fall. They had a ton of interest in this grant, but yeah, things for subsidized coaching, equipment. Yeah, you led me on to that, and again, thank you, but yeah, unfortunately rejected, but there are more in the future, I agree, especially when we it's tough to say we are going to do this when you don't have everything lined up in advance. So it's easier once we have a location, we maybe have a design. And that's partially why I'm here, here this evening, is to sort of talk about these steps forward. If we're thinking about 2026, we need to be starting to take steps forward now, so that when 2026 comes, we have done our due diligence and have accessed all the resources that we So yeah, just to highlight, I think I've touched on this again, it's kind of leading into different areas of the presentation, but really we want to develop programming moving forward. We want lessons, we want coaching, we want infrastructure to have youth aspiring to be that, that coach in the future, and that's the type of thing that keeps kids in sports, having idol to look up to, making skateboarding cool. And it's in the media now, it's on social media, you don't have to be a pro skateboarder, kick flipping down steps, you can be an adult that's learning to go up and turn around on the bank. It's becoming increasingly popular with women of all ages. We're looking at doing a ladies night, and, and yeah, there's been a lot. Yeah, no, there's been a lot of interest. There's been a lot of interest, and it'll be ladies only, and, and it's really fun. You wouldn't want to learn to push, I know Dana's going to be there.
They did my 10 years, don't need to do the.
Fair enough. Yeah, after school programs, skateboarding as a competitive sport. And yeah, like I've mentioned, we want to be on the forefront of other communities where they can look to what we did and ultimately hope to get an incredible skate park. That's the other benefit is that when you do it right, you won't have to do it again for literally, I don't know, half a century, if we do it right now. So. Here's a smaller municipality, I believe they're under 10,000, and they invested. I adjusted the pricing, because this is from that gentleman that I was speaking to. I adjusted the pricing that he gave me with 15% on top, because he said Quebec is typically cheaper and bolster to them, but also cheaper for all the materials. So this is, the initial bill in Quebec was 15% cheaper, but I've done the math, this is accounting. So this small skate park is 375, but this is the type of thing we're looking at. And you can see that includes the landscaping, you're getting something that looks really nice. And I think for us, I would really like to incorporate. Actually, that looks really good, but there's like, oh, it's got a focus, that has a focus on beginner, intermediate, advanced, which is really, really important. We don't want a skate park that's only going to have features that's for the advanced people. And in my dream world, I would see the skate park being somewhere from the current one, and then the current one could have its own programming where kids could like, yes, and graduate out of that to the other program, so that they're, the youth, youth have a location with maybe some really simple stuff that is enclosed, and they're not out in the fringe with everybody else, but then they sort of, that's another thing that they're sort of aspiring to is graduating out of there to the big park where we get our lessons. Aquasasney, so this one was just done last fall, that's on the Aquasasney reserve. They again are about 14,000 people there, and that's a half million dollar skate park. And to be honest, that is, I believe, what our target number should be for this community. Because now is the time that you have an opportunity to have someone like us here to help you get it, and if you don't do it now, then in the years to come, you're going to wish you health, I believe that. And that again brings in like my personal experience. I just, I have an anecdote, but I think it'll, it'll apply. Like when we were starting our business, we buying a tree line was not a priority, but we had a grant opportunity, so we, it makes it a priority, and, and time is relevant when you're talking about budgeting. Because timing is everything, and when you, when you have an opportunity, maybe spending a little more upfront now, when it maybe isn't necessarily in the budget, and it can save you down the line, is, is an important thing to. So, steps forward. I talked about our lesson that we want to establish. Our, our fall event. Sorry, I've lost myself here. So we're looking to establish the coaching guys, guides, as I mentioned, and develop a framework. As long as we get insurance, I think this can get done this summer, and we can actually get two, four week sessions done. I wouldn't be the least bit surprised if they do fill. We want to do another fall event, and we want to continue to fundraise, so I think Jane is going to be starting up our fundraising again shortly. And with some help from the town, I think that we can continue to do grant applications, but I do think having some some more traction and general picture would be beneficial to, to our grant applications, but we're not going to stop. We'll just continue, but they will have more strength as we move forward with the plans. What we're asking you for the steps forward is to establish the location and update the budget and the timeline. The timeline actually might, to be honest, be pretty good. It's still 2026, realistically. I think that we might want two years to, to raise funds, plan properly, and then receive to like actually be ready to pour in the spring of 2026. If it was 2025, that's not bad, but we don't want to rush something like this, like I think that we should be properly planning. So what we're asking for is to create a skate park advisory committee. I think I want to just mention, the reason we see value in that, I'm a little concerned, and maybe wrongly so, but I'll just be honest with the rep, the grand rep plan being what we're all, this is all sort of hinging on this grand rep plan. If that just gets done, and it just comes in, and it's, this is the location that we feel is best, best suited for the skate park, but it hasn't actually taken into consideration any of the advice or guidance of the resources we have, or, or, or the skateboard community, and it's just some I don't know, corporation, a consult, consultant, that just thinks this is the best spot for it. It's not the same as the dog park. Like the dog park, you can just pick a green field, and they can say this is where the dog park should go. I don't believe that skate park is the same. So I think that that is my biggest fear, and that's really why I'm here tonight, is to make sure that moving forward, the proper consultation is done before this person decides where the location should be. So I think that we should create a skate park advisory committee, because I also think that we're at a point where we would benefit from having maybe some of the experience that's on council to help guide us forward, and we can be checking in on the goals and making sure that we're realizing them as a team. I think that the council raised the budget to $300,000, and then I think that we would be happy to. And then I think we should make it known that the community goal is $500,000, and I think that we should promote that that is what we're working towards. And I think that we should take that on, and I think that the council, along with us, should say, this is what we're trying to do, and that's your act of good faith when you raise it to 300. And then it's up to the community to raise that other 200,000, whether it be through hard work, grants, fundraising, and then this town could end up with a half million dollar skate park.
Great presentation. Thank you. To Britelle. So I have a few comments. It's, it's great that you're here tonight. Thank you for your presentation. I actually have just returned from quite extensive travels, and I saw so many skate parks in the middle of cities. And it was on my mind, as I, like each of them made me think, because when you were here last year, or the year before, whenever it was, my initial thought was, we need more money, and we need to have the timeline.
Yeah.
So, because for me, it is important to have facilities that are the appropriate for where the kids are at right now. And skateboarding is a big thing again, it was when I was young, and now it's come back.
Yeah.
And I would like to see us raise definitely the budget. It was on my notes to, to bring up at some point anyway, so it's, when I saw you come tonight, I hope it is great. It's kind of, you know, it's build it, they'll come, I think they'll, they come, and now we need to build it. Like we need, we need to, we need to catch up with you guys.
Yeah.
Is what we need to do.
Yeah.
So I'm all for raising it, not that this is the night to, to discuss it, but I would like to see maybe staff come back with some ideas. Your committee is a great idea. But again, when you're talking land, we only have so much land. So there's not a lot of options out there, but I think it would be smart for us to find a location and, and earmark it for it, because if we wait too long, our land is, is, is getting sucked up with everything else. So I do think that that's important, that we earmark a location for and, and figure out the budget, and then help to figure out if there's funding out there, grants, and to our corporate, you know, corporate sponsorships, because if you have, like you said, you have all of those things, those stacks in a row, then it's easier to go get the final. You know, corporate sponsorships, because if you have, like you said, you have all of those things, those ducks in a row, then it's easier to go get the final pieces.
Yeah. Awesome.
Thank you.
I have a question, Jennifer, um, skateboard park expansion. Is that something that would be eligible at all for new DCs? Any DC monies?
Um, I believe, um, if you are doing, uh, like a growth related, so for example, if you're taking something that's one size and then you're adding to it. The growth piece, if you're not just replacing like the light, there probably could be an eligible piece of that. Uh, we could look into it further, but to me, I could think of, uh, you know, taking something, let's say you double the square, pick the footage, then you're probably about half of the.
Well, we're doubling it, but just moving it to a different location.
There would probably be a component part of it.
And to your point about the recreation master plan, I have absolute faith that when that does start coming forward, that Graham will. Fully consulting, um, making recommendations, maybe it will be that there be a committee that that feeds into that. I want to reassure you, as you're in good hands, I think all of us very much support youth programming and are excited by your energy and what you've been doing for this. This project. Yeah, it's, uh, and you will see it on skateboards at some point.
Perfect.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry, no, you're not.
There's just a quick question, you're a non-for-profit organization.
Yes.
Second part is, have you contacted the county, uh, future developments for any monies?
No.
I would.
Okay, thank you, Dan. The future development, okay, thank you. All right, yeah, thanks everyone.
Next up, you've got the, uh. Armiree McNabb Ringette Association, we've got the Devils who are making presentation here tonight. I understand that will be Chris Rusell and Lisa Belton. Oh, I'm so sorry, and Jillian. Welcome, everybody, do we have a third chair for, uh?
I guess Dan. I think. Is it okay for first standing?
Whatever you're comfortable with, welcome girls, it was nice to chat with some of you earlier on.
They're stretching their.
Sure.
Girl, Chris, yes. I thought they were gonna do a chant, just the chants.
Where are we?
There's one, your picture.
Sorry, first you guys.
Very loud in the arena, so I'm shocked. Or you can, or you can stand up.
Welcome.
So thank you so much for having us today and thank you for giving us this opportunity, I'm going to speak to you. I'm Chris Rusell, I sit on the executive committee for the Armiree McNabb Ringette Association and I'm also the head coach of one of the usual teams in town. Uh, I'm Jillian Lowton, I'm a new member of the executive committee, I hold positions on there. I'm a proud mom of two young, very high range ringette players. I also coached a team and I played ringette for thirty five years from like local levels up to national level, so I'm very excited that my kids. Share the same passion with me, which is amazing, I have one little one here. Just coloring because she's inspired. Um, but yeah, so I'm very, I'm very proud to be here, very proud to represent Armiree. Um, I live in Almont and there's no ringette in Almont or Carleton Place, so Armiree is my home association.
I was gonna say that too, because I forgot, so I'm invite on acres, which is a part of West Carlton, and again, I don't have ringette in the area. My daughter's been playing here since she was five, I think, so she's been a member of the. Playing at Ringette. Well, seven years. And my name is Lisa Belton and I get to do the ice scheduling for our association, so I work closely with Graham and. Sort of how who's gonna practice and play in games, that I have a daughter who also plays in Ringette. And this year I have the opportunity to be a trainer on the bench, so there's obviously roses and things like that as well. And I'm in McNabb, we're excited. But none of us actually. So before we get to, uh, you know. Kind of the meat of what we're here for, we have our objectives up and just like our friends from the Skateboard Association, who just love to, we're here to talk to you about access to the sports as well. We're here specifically for girls, obviously, because we're the Ringette Association and we are predominantly made up of clean ice players. Um, some of the objectives tonight are to provide you with a background on who we are, what we do, why we're in your community and why we're here. Demonstrate how we support the growth and development of girls in sport. As well as seek an arrangement with the town of Armiree so that we can allow our participants to continue to have access to fair recreational leagues for them. So we're a nonprofit volunteer association, we've been established here in the Armiree community since nineteen eighty three. We've seen continuous growth over the past ten years. We went from a tiny community of about thirteen players back in nineteen eighty three to over a hundred and thirty players at this point in time. Like I said, we're predominantly female, we've got a handful of boys who are playing in the bunch, which is the five to six, but after that, we are all female, we're a hundred percent. On that note, the executive committee itself is made up of nine committee members, seven of those are also female. And every bench has at least one female coach as well as a female trainer sitting on the bench. So we are here leading by example with our girls, so they can come back in the future. And Jack, Jack's here, he's fun. We're super excited to be here as well. I bring up the fact that we are female led, because I think it's important for us to know that when you see yourself in the future, you know what are what's possible for you. So just as we're here tonight, providing an example for these girls and what they can possibly do with their future. We're here speaking on behalf of them as well, so that they can see us stand up here and represent them on their behalf. In fact, yes, I'm gonna jump in here. Um, so back in nineteen eighty three, when we got really started, it was brought. To different schools by Glenn Arthur, who just asked for kids to come try ringette, come on out and try ringette. It grew in three years to become an association, which was Joyce Potter, who started the association with her husband, which really put Armiree on the map, right? It kind of brought everything through everything, I know this because my father-in-law is from Almont, he knows Glenn Arthur, he knew about the broke. Of ringette, he knew about ringette in Almont, he knew about group in our region, it slowly, slowly closed to other areas. Armiree has retained, has kept growing, there's Upper Valley as well, but they're small. And they are also struggling a little bit to keep their players, so we also had times where the kids from Upper Valley join Armiree. So Armiree has grown not only with Armiree, but all of its surrounding areas. And like I said, it's just grown, so our difference between ringette and hockey or other other sports, that often has very defined geographical boundaries. Armiree does not, so our geo boundaries are quite broad and it ranges from Mississippi Mills, where we are, West Carlton. City of Ottawa, uh, Ward Five, um, McNabb Brayside, so it stretches so much. And even if we partner with Upper Valley for players for competitive nature, if there's no teams at that level of competition and our team has it. They join, so we continuously snowball with other associations, the last thing we want to see is our teams and our players. Going to West Ottawa, going to city teams, because we don't have an association here. And so it's really important, I think, to note that out of all of our numbers that we have for association, thirty two percent of our population are outside of Armiree alone. And of those numbers, that's everything else outside, sorry, thirty two percent outside of Armiree and McNabb. So everything else is outside of that, um, that group. Um, so anything else about that? Just so if you were to register, for example, if you go to the eastern region and you look up our boundaries to try and determine where your child would be registering for ringette. For me, since I'm sitting in West Carlton, but I'm invite on acres and automatically directed towards Armiree, because that's how they physically set up their boundaries. And that's where the uniqueness comes into play, because ringette doesn't necessarily determine by tax pay. It's already been set and this is what we're bound by. So I've spoken a little bit about some of the history of how we came to be the Armiree Association. We strive to keep the girls in sports, so we really pride ourselves, obviously, there's a lot of pride in the kids. We have many kids who I sent in an attachment later, without a test, there was a lot of players who couldn't come tonight, luckily, you couldn't come tonight. But we have continuously have a lot of growth and enthusiasm. We still have a Joyce Potter Award that is given out every year at the banquet for an outstanding, um, player volunteer who's involved. I've had a child in monies since twenty seventeen. And the amount of older kids and examples that come on the ice to teach these kids to stand eight, to get up after you fall, is it's beautiful. Uh, I myself as a coach and a player, I learned my best lessons by watching other players teach me. Members of Team Canada to come in and show me how to use your body differently. We've done the same thing, we posted, sorry, I should say, we didn't host, but Ontario Ringette Association hosted the Winter Games in Armiree this year. We had a vast amount of kids come and watch, and although some of them miss school, it was great for them because they got to experience this and watch these role models play. And we had the McGuire Girls, I personally had the McGuire Girls at my, like, on the ice, my team, to work with my players. And that kind of led by example situation is real and well, especially with ringette, because it's such a. Like a small community of people, and I always tell my players, I've got a few here on the ice who may be opponents. So off the ice, we're a community and I want to set communities together. Um, every year we host a home, a home team tournament, the first weekend of December. It draws in about thirty teams, at least thirty teams usually. Uh, again, I'll speak to my own personal situation, since I've moved to Ottawa, I I I was part of the crew that started the University of Ottawa ringette team. In two thousand and four. And it has grown to this wonderful thing, that same batch of players that I played with then, every year we've been in a tournament team in Armiree. It's really put Armiree on the map and a lot of teams come here and they like it because it's local enough. That we're here, we spend our time, we make it a weekend as we're here. But it's local and it's fun and it draws from the young ages all the way up to even my forties. Wonderful, and I hope to always continue playing. So coming back to the idea of girls in sport, I just wanted to hit you with a few statistics tonight, because it would be a presentation to the town council without providing some numbers. Um, so I'm in charge of those tonight and we just want to talk quickly about the idea of girls in sport, because obviously that's something that's very close to our heart, that's why we're so involved. And that's what we're going to talk to you about tonight, there's a couple of different, um. You know, research articles out there that specifically look at the idea of girls in sport and what the impacts of that are if you're not playing in team sport. So there's one that came out of Canada that was called Rally. They did about a survey of about ten thousand girls aged five to sixteen, there's a second one that came out of the States and that one's called Girls in Sport and Impact Performance. They also researched, surveyed ten thousand girls between grades five to twelve. And it's really staggering kind of what you can see from that and how positive it is and what an impact sport actually has on these young players when we're looking at the future of these young women. Um, so for example, some of the items that I can cross when I was looking this up is increased confidence. Positive body image. Academic performance is higher amongst girls who are playing within sports. Personal relationships are better, they learn how to navigate relationships at a young age because they're playing on teams and they're learning how to do that. They're less likely to use, um, substances, so they're less likely to use drugs when they're playing on team sports. Some of these stats, when I looked at them specifically body image, when these girls were asked between grades five to twelve. About their body image, girls who are playing on a team sport are sixteen percent less likely to want to change their body appearance. And that's important, that's what we're here to talk to you about, their future. They're eleven percent more likely to be happy with themselves when they're playing on a team sport. Within personal relationships, whereas forty four percent of girls who do not take part in team sports are less likely to be trusting of other females. Sixty percent who play on a team sport say that they are trusting of other females within their own age groups, that's also important. We're building relationships and we're building for the future. Ringette itself is unique because as I've said, it is predominantly female, so there's a lot of opportunities here. As I've said, if you cannot see yourself in the future, you don't know where to place yourself. By having mentors who are teenagers, women like us who are sitting on benches, sitting on the executive committee. We are representing them, they see us. They can see what the power of their future is, what are the possibilities for them, who can they be? It's a safe space because it is predominantly female, we see that in change rooms all the time. So when we look at our change rooms, our girls, there's music blasting, they're dancing around, they're doing their thing. Their team building, they're building on the relationships with each other, they are comfortable with their teams because they know that it's a safe space for them. They don't have to worry about being better than the boys, they don't have to worry about competing, they don't have to worry about. You know, what's being said, because they're here as a team and they're all the same, they look like each other, they are sisters, we talk about this on the YouTube. We talk about our sisters all the time. They have sisters outside their families and it really truly is something to see when you get to see them develop those relationships. Just as I said, um, we are growing, which is important to note as well. Unfortunately, by the age of sixteen, one in three girls will drop out of team sports, whereas one in ten boys will drop out. That's considerable considering that, you know, it's one in three for the girls, one in ten for boys. By having something like ringette in your community, you're supporting the idea of them staying.
Sorry.
I was about to do a head count and see if one of our stepped around there. We've talked about the good things with girls in sport, but there are some barriers that we do come up against and some of those is access to facilities as well as cost. And so one of the reasons why girls tend to drop out is especially specifically from lower income families is the cost of the sport. We'll be realistic with you, it is not a cheap sport. Through our equipment, obviously, it's personal protective equipment to keep you safe on the ice. We need to pay for ice time, we also have insurance and we have other groups that are involved as well. One of our challenges with this right now, as you're aware, we're working, you know, the town of Armiree is working through a potential new agreement with McNabb Brayside. This is affecting the cost of our association fees. It could force us to charge if you're a non-resident to the town of Armiree, upwards of two hundred and sixty dollars per player. Just as Coach Jillian mentioned, she has two children, so that's five hundred dollars for her, and I was about to put my third one in. But the cost of the program for a third is less than that fee, so it makes it very difficult because we're coming in from the outside. So it's just, it becomes a barrier and we're seeing that more and more, we do the math with families who have three, four, five kids playing the sport. There's a family that actually has four girls, so that's, you know, that's a thousand dollars additional in fees that they're paying. Potentially for next year, if we're unable to find some sort of solution for for our fees. We're good? Oh, sorry, sorry, yes, I changed.
Excellent.
So we have a question.
Yeah.
You said that it's two hundred and fifty dollars for each registered or is it two hundred and fifty dollars extra?
For players to register.
So as of, as of right now. Um, without the agreement?
Without the agreement, no, without no. Right, so without the agreement, it would be an additional two hundred.
Okay.
We have our regular registration fees.
Yes.
And we have to do, um, sorry, I'm gonna jump into a little bit of yours, but.
Yes.
Um, we have a regular registration fees and we're, we have an open registration, usually we would have had registration early, registration open by now. We would have had it open usually around April, May, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, by our bank, we have early registration open, but we couldn't do that this year because of this agreement that has been canceled. And so now we need to reevaluate how we do our, how we do our registration, because then we have a registration fee for Armiree. Um, members of Armiree, which is. So based on last year's number, only thirty seven participants, so twenty eight percent live in Armiree. Forty percent live in McNabb, the thirty two percent live outside of those boundaries, so Armiree wouldn't pay any fees. McNabb would pay the two fifty for them to be able to get that money back, can you do those numbers again, please?
Yeah, sure.
Thirty seven, you want, broken down my numbers, yeah, thirty seven participants are from Armiree. Fifty two participants from McNabb, no, just the percentage, oh, sorry, sorry.
Well, I rounded them up and they come just before a hundred percent.
Twenty eight percent are part.
Thank you.
Forty percent McNabb.
Yeah.
Uh, Mississippi Mills is thirteen percent. Ottawa is approximately twenty percent. And other is how it came out. Three percent, that's okay, thank you, yeah, so I would say the the other was part of ones who. Joined from other associations because of the level of competition, so it's just over a hundred percent because I rounded everything up. I recognize that the number is up. That's good. Um. But yeah, so we'd be the only association, because of this agreement and the change of the agreement, we would be the only association in Ontario that would have tiered grades. And so for us, we're trying to. And so for us, we're trying to develop a registration package. It's very difficult right now for us to figure out how do we do it, because now we would have a premium to anyone outside of Armire. But what do we do with the other, the other people who are outside of McNabb and outside of Armire? And, you know, how is it? We've always prided ourselves on being a lower cost association compared to the associations, because we're continuing to try and keep these associations growing. So we always fundraise, and we always try and keep our costs a little bit lower. We do shared ice, we do other programs, we do equipment exchanges, everything to try and keep the sport from growing, keep the sport growing, but without increasing the cost. So we see registration fees in West Ottawa inwards about eight hundred dollars, I believe, or just over that. Plus tournament fees, all of our tournament fees are more. So like what Chris said, we recognize the sport is expensive, but we try really hard to keep our families in. We also support our families who may need financial assistance to use other sport, I believe. Thank you. And we have, I know in the past, looked at ways that we can help fundraise to offset costs for families. And now looking at a registration package this year with this agreement not being in place, it is making it very difficult for us to figure out how are we going to do this, and how do we address the other group outside of the Armire side of McNabb. Um, facilities. So I don't have to choose. That's okay. So as Gillian and Chris will share, if you guys, we do, we are a little bit unique compared to hockey and other association. Our banners are drawn. And we understand that you guys are working through something with the township of McNabb-Brayside. And respect, you know, you guys have to move forward to install a rent facility. So, so what we're asking is for that other thirty, thirty-two percent, we're asking for them to be exempt from the additional two hundred and fifty dollars. So for our McNabb-Brayside residents, we would still move forward and collect that money from, from the township and reimburse it to the town. But because that other thirty-two percent don't have, they can't go to the city of Ottawa or Mississippi Mills, so it is a significant cost for some of those families. And what potentially could happen is that they could ask for a release from our association and go to the West Ottawa's or go to other associations. And that's, we don't want to see our, you know, we've been working so hard to grow the association, and at this point, we're afraid that our association is gone. You know, it's going to start to shake. It's doubled in the last five years. Our numbers have doubled. And as we're seeing, it's not just doubling in the, it's doubling in the younger ages. Even during COVID, when other associations across, across the province were collapsing and folding and couldn't participate that year, especially those two years of COVID, they had such low numbers. Armire kept going, and trust us, we were on the ice, and we had very strict rules about how we were participating and how we were doing this. But we continued, and once things opened up for a regular season, that U-ten team where we had one, one and a half teams, we have, we'll be at two that year and then three the next year.
Now, I have a question on that. How would that, if, if there's strict boundaries in terms of where people can play, how would it be that they would go to another association and play?
So they ask for a release. So then they would, there's a forum on Ringat, Ontario. So there's various reasons why sometimes people leave associations. Typically, it's for competitive play. If we don't have the level of play in our association, they can then ask for the release to go and play at A, double A, triple A, depending on how it goes. So it's a little bit different than hockey because our associations aren't as big as minor hockey is. So that's typically when you see the releases offered. But in the circumstances, you know, we would have a hard time saying, no, we can't release them for fees.
And it wouldn't likely be because of fees, because if I recall, the fees that you have here are
They are lower. But if we are asking to them to pay a premium of two hundred and fifty dollars, brings our registration cost that much higher and very close to West Ottawa. And it's very difficult to look at. We know, we recognize our fees are going to go up this year due to everything, but not really getting much for the families for two hundred and fifty dollars. And the reality is, a lot of them will say, well, I'm going to be spending extra fifty dollars. I'm going to go to another association. It's going to give me programs worth of that two hundred and fifty, three hundred dollar difference. And yeah, they're typically including power skating, which we're looking at bringing in, you know, on ice training. On ice training, which would be an additional fee for our players to opt into rather than being mandatory. So basically, the way we're trying to do it is you get your ice time at your rate. And then, you know, if you want to do extra programming, we're looking at ways of being able to offer that to players if they want it, but we're not making it mandatory as part of our fee because we are trying to keep those fees lower. See your hand up. I just wanted to know that we did speak about this at Eastern Region. We've already raised the issue. And they basically told us at this point, you know, they can put it, put across for the transfers, but it's no guarantee that they're going to get it because it's not normally something that they would offer it for. So even though players might opt, they might still start coming here anyway. Which would be a shame if they couldn't play if they can.
And do you, do you go, do you see ice outside of Armire? Or is this your
So, yeah, so typically, right now, we do all of our ice rentals through the
And, and I know that our rates already are very favorable compared to areas outside of, by that, that's part of the draw for wanting to rent primarily within
Well, and we also receive priority ice time here as well, because, because our association is considered to have it from the association within the Armire. When we go looking outside of the town of Armire for ice time, we don't get priority ice.
So it's more expensive, but it's not priority.
Yeah, so sometimes, you know, hours, you get turned in, or it's hours where you get turned down and told, sorry, you don't have ice for anybody that's not considered a local to the, to the home.
So this is probably a question for Graham, you know, because I'm really trying to understand this, and, and because there's a lot of caveats to how everything is, is priced out in our record. So how does this differ from hockey? Like, is hockey very regional, Graham? That is, like, because we seem to be having a lot of
Minor hockey is part of hockey's from Ontario, and they're part of District Five, which essentially the boundary is Armire and McNabb-Brayside. Similarly, with the exception of a few players that have special permission to play within District Five. It might be from, say, or, you know, just this side of Armire, say, by Urban Four, or, you know,
Right, right, right.
Very few, there's, you know, like, less than ten or twelve that they have within that association, so it's
They're trying, trying to accommodate fairness with this one association is very different than any of the others.
Yeah, no one else is a similar in nature to this. The closest example might be the, the blue fish swim front, just because they thought they go from Armire, they go from, they go from, you know, similar type thing, but their numbers are drastically smaller.
Okay, so do we anticipate them coming forth as well and asking for special special treatment?
They haven't said anything yet, based on the information that's been provided to them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I did speak with the president of our firm on hockey, because we were trying to collaborate and see like what strategy are you guys using? He did say to me that Angela Miller, that they had, right now, they had about ten players that were outside. And I, I haven't seen the minutes from their last meeting, but they were looking at a way just to deal with those ten players within their association so that they wouldn't have to see that additional cost. I don't know the outcome of that, of that, of those minutes.
But you ladies understand that, and we're kind of in a pick-up, because, you know, we had an agreement that was pulled away.
Yeah.
And so we, we have a facility and we have, you know, so it is very difficult to sit in this seat when it comes to these decisions.
Absolutely.
And I just want to be clear on one thing. A couple of you mentioned that we're working through an agreement, and that's not the case. We've that door has closed. They canceled it, and, you know, we've taken it as, as, you know, an opportunity to go it on our own. The one thing I, I'm going to be very honest with you that I struggle with is that you've got twenty, twenty-eight percent of your players are, are arm fire. And one hundred percent of arm fire taxpayers are contributing towards that rate and in effect subsidizing the somehow with math here, seventy, seventy-two percent that are non
And, and that's why we propose that we still go ahead and collect the, the money from McNabb's, right?
And, and I that, that, the optics on that one, I, I
Well, that's our, that's our life, go for gold, right? That's a go for gold, you put that one out there, but we are obvious, you know, just because we have that proposal doesn't mean that we aren't open to working with you as well. And so proposal two is negotiating a fee per class that's a bit lower than the two fifty per player so that, you know, some of these kids can stay within the community. What that fee could potentially look like would be Yeah, I think that's one of the kind of left proposal two is basically if one isn't an option to go down a different, you know, maybe similar to like the partners, right, who have, you know, they have a, you know, they don't pay an out-of-town rate and they don't pay an in-town rate, it's sort of a in-between.
So we've got our recreation directors.
Just, just a point of clarity, the number keeps coming up, but it is a noticeable difference, but so what we did with this hybrid user rate, there's, there's three different categories, and they incrementally increase by fifty dollars, so it was one hundred point five to two hundred. So it's two hundred.
Okay.
So you're at the
Somebody asked for two hundred.
Yes, you have two hundred, probably not two fifty, just to be clear, I know, but it's, it's
You've already got us.
More, but I need that.
That's fifty bucks.
So what we can, I mean, we just received this last week. We can cancel, we'll, we'll chew on it. If there's, there's something, you know, staff to come back with, with a different report. And you're not going to find anybody at this table who doesn't support what you're doing, what the girls are doing. Many of us have, you know, have had kids in sports competitive. We recognize the value. And I'd love to come up and see one of your games at some point in time. It, it's, this is a tough one. This really is a tough one, and, and I appreciate, you appreciate every fault it is.
I really, oh, sorry.
Oh, I, yeah, so I, I'm still trying to figure, so I'm still trying to learn, like, what, what is your basic, your basic key? So
So last year, our basic fee was four hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
We didn't have to raise our fees. We haven't increased our fees. Yeah, I, I don't want to say it was from twenty twenty. It's, it's been a while since we've increased our fees. We already had acknowledged prior to any of this happening that our fees were going to increase this year. We're going to have jerseys to replace, we have things, you know, to maintain. There's lots of things that we have in association, like, I'm going to use a shot clock as another example, right? We, it's an, it's an additional piece of equipment we have to purchase because for our sport, we, we play with it. But there's a scoreboard provided for everybody else. You know, the town doesn't provide us a shot clock to operate our, so there's, I mean, our association is very different than other associations. And, and we fully recognize that we are unique in this. This is something that, you know, nobody, we obviously didn't think about it until until the contract was broken with McNabb-Brayside, because at that point, since there was an agreement in place, we didn't need to worry about these additional players because we did meet the threshold before for being considered local to the community. Unfortunately, it's something that's come up, and just as it's unique for you, it's, you know, it's a challenge for us as well. And so if you don't ask, you don't know, and so that's what we're here to do. And although we have two proposals, but like we said, we are very much open to continuing this, the discussion to try and find that sort of a a solution that would be agreeable to, to all parties. Just to be, when I said our fees were four seventy-five, that was from U-ten. So those are girls who are actively playing games with referees. Are you eight families that are, they're three seventy-five? Yeah, I'm looking, she's our registered, three seventy-five, and our bunnies is even less, she twenty-five, so two twenty-five, so if so, two hundred dollars on top of the two twenty-five becomes almost double. The cost for the
And there's no, like, I know when I had my boys in hockey, you know, your third one, even though we didn't want to play, I put them in anyway because it was twenty fifty bucks, so there's not, not much of that.
I'll look over Noah's. So I don't think, I don't think we have other associations do a bit of adjustment. We don't. It was mostly because we're trying to keep those costs low already. And it's all volunteer run, right? Everyone is, I'm, where every, every member of the executive is volunteer running everyone that they have. But I would like to challenge, and I'd like to challenge to look at the, and that's the economic impact of how much we do bring in, even just that one tournament plus all of our home games. I think it's important to recognize that that one tournament could bring into the, the town thirty thousand dollars with that many teams that we're bringing in. And our district as well, because what you see with hockey, they're District Five, and so they tend to be playing the Valley, which means they'll travel in maybe thirty minutes, you know, to come and play within the area. So they're going home after their games. They're not staying in town. They're not sticking around. The way our boundaries work and the way the region works is we're playing teams that are as far away as Kingston, so they're coming in for double games. They're staying the day. They're spending money in the town when they come to play. They're potentially spending the night, and that's not even a tournament weekend when they come.
That's good, though.
Okay, and again, that's all well and good, and we appreciate all of that. But the balance, it's again, like, it was said, that our taxpayers are really effectively subsidizing it. So my actual comment was that, like it was said, staff will come back and look at this, but Graham, when we were to launch out the last time with McNabb-Brayside, how is this association affected then? Do you remember? You were here. So maybe you can look at that when you come back with a, you know, with, with some ideas. Thank you, thank you.
And we've looked at ways that we could try and subsidize the association, but our numbers are so big that we honestly, we just don't want to defeat all of our fundraising efforts for this when we thought this is a better opportunity, this is an opportunity for us to come and see if there's something we can negotiate, be it a membership fee for the band, for the association, so they can contribute. We recognize we're not paying tax dollars here. But we're doing our groceries here, we're running our lunch here, we're doing all of that. So we'd like to contribute, but like I said, that second, we said that second proposal, we're open to discussion. We just really want to see your kids, our registration open, and we knew you were breaking, so we thought this is, jump in, we have to jump in now.
Really appreciate your time and your visitation. And thank you to the letter writers.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do we have the time for your registration? It's too late.
So I think, sorry, I'm jumping in, yeah, but I think we're looking at opening We need to open in the next couple of weeks. We're planning to open Notice of Intent, basically, is what we're doing right now. We're looking at a notice of intent. So do you intend to register? Yes. If you're out of town, you're potentially looking at, oh, it's going to add a two hundred dollars per player additional. Does that change? We need to know in advance. What are we looking at for the total numbers? And if we, the intent to register, we put that, that check of like, will that change your registration? And if yes, would you be asking for a release? We want to track that information because we also need to then talk to, like, we can't, to a release and, and it'd be accepted, it has to go, and make sure it's accepted to be released.
And it'll changes our But your McNabb residents are supposed to get that money back from their government.
So that's why it makes it really hard for that thirty-two percent who have nowhere to go. Yeah, and potentially, we could, we recruit the cost by increasing our fees to help support them. Like, there's different ways or fundraises or whatever, but it feels uncomfortable when there's thirty-two percent of our association is paying more than the rest of us. That's the challenge.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thanks, girls. Thanks for being here.
Thanks for standing up all that time, too. Good job.
Thank you, Graham.
Okay, so that's it for, well, we'll get them finished here.
Yeah, we're going to do bylaws next. You're missing the good part.
Bedtime. Now you turn it on. Why didn't they have it on when they were talking?
Okay. We have no public meetings this evening. We have no matters table to defer to unfinished business. No notice motions, and the staff reports, we do have a couple of junior engine that was declared on twelve A by Council Cooper. And then she's the first to have reported.
They council adopted bylaw to lift zero point three meter reserves and dedicate the lands, it's public highways for block fifty on plan forty-nine M dash one zero eight, blocks twenty-three and twenty-four on plan forty-nine M dash one one zero down of Armire, Seabird Drive and Morgan Goocheway.
We're going to second, we're going to get on both these counts, bring the dead counts or do you know?
I apologize, the microphone seems very sensitive, so I'm going to try and balance it so you can hear me, but so that I'm not screaming in your ear. So the staff are requesting council approve a bylaw to lift the point three meter reserve on block fifty of plan forty-nine M one oh eight and blocks twenty-three and twenty-four on plan forty-nine M one ten and dedicate these blocks as public roads. So reserve blocks are point So reserve blocks are point three meter wide strips of land between the road and adjacent vans and the reserves. The reserve is a means of controlling development, tells subdivision agreement phase three and four A was signed and executed. So the subdivision agreement, commercial space, metal space three and four have been signed, executed, and the plans letter was provided to the county. So it's recommended that council let and dedicate these reserve blocks in order to permit the orderly development of phase three and four A of commercial state metals.
Any questions or comments on that one?
Good morning, Pucci, that's where the submit. Urlongs are, so you can't drive further into the subdivision.
Uh, so on Morgan Clujay, um, for phase four A, they are going to be, um, building G road at some point. So I think they've started construction of the road, it isn't yet open to the public. But that will be continued and link up to the road, which will connect Morgan Clujay and Seabird Drive.
So right now, all the construction people are coming up with old highway seventeen in Mount Losca. My concern is if that. Road allowance is given and they take the cement, pediments away. Construction people, workers will be taking the shortcut through. And Leveque and then making a right on Poochang going that way rather than coming off. Mount Losca.
So through the subdivision agreement, we can work with the developer to set access points for construction activity. Um, it's also in the developer's interest to continue to have their construction vehicles coming in off of the highway. Um, and that avoids damaging the roads that they've already constructed, um, which what they would then need to repair and bring up to town standards before they transfer. So as a general rule, they're likely going to continue to have the construction traffic come in right off the highway. Um, because it's most convenient for them, because when they're driving through the subdivision, they would have to be driving probably. A little bit more carefully and cautiously, especially at certain times of the day when kids like you. Um, and when they're driving on those construction roads. There, there's the expectation that those are not, um, filled with people and kids and walkers and joggers. Um, so. And it's unlikely that they would switch that, given that they've already established that construction access. Um, but again, the subdivision agreement does allow us the authority to, um, identify the access points for construction vehicles. If we need to.
So the fear of ours was it'd become another Thomas Street. We're getting more complaints about Thomas because of the people taking the shortcuts to get in, and that's, that was my fear by these other two roads.
Just a comment, I appreciate your French. My, my maiden name is Pucci, very few people pronounce it properly. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? So all in favor of that one? Great. Um, and me.
The council received report number twenty-three dash zero six dash thirteen dash there. Zero freeze information, and that this annual, uh, by jumping. I'll rephrase that, the council approved a minor variance from the provisions of the sign and merchandise display by law. Number fifty-two oh nine dash zero four, permit the installation of ground mounted sign board. With an increased maximum sign face at two forty glass and Grand West, as requested by. Oh. I might need Alex for this, so the, the cool athlete is. And the council adopted amending by law to provide for the executive.
Move her in a second for that, please, Council, Rinsdale, Counselor Cooper, Alex, you're up again.
That call saved is a contact nick, so. Construction of the new elementary school to more to basket dry bread. Uh, two sided ground sign is proposed to promote the school and communicate important information regarding the school's activity. Um, so the applicant has noted that their proposed signage is consistent with signage already installed at other C E C D E site. So the following variance has been requested to fill with the proposed signage, so. The sign by law currently commits double sided signs of up to four square meters, that's two square meters per side. However, the proposed sign would be a total combined sign face area of approximately eight point nine two square meters, that's four point four six square meters per side. The proposed sign meets other provisions of the sign by law, including setbacks from lot lines and maximum height. Requested variance from section eight point, point four is considered to be minor. As it should have little impact on surrounding properties and land uses, given the size of the subject property. Um, and it's also consistent with school signs elsewhere. Um, so staff recommend approval of a minor variance from the provisions of the sign and merchandising display by law. Number fifty-two oh nine dash oh four, permit the installation of the down mounted sign board with the increased maximum sign face area requested. Um, at two forty back in Grand West, as requested by the.
Counselor Rinsdale.
So, um. Alex, do we know how much of this sign is lit up?
Uh, so my understanding, sorry. A second. So, uh, we had a plan for the sign here. Um, I think originally they were proposing a, um. L E D element, um, but they're no longer proposing an L E D element to the sign.
So it's only going to be visible through the daytime?
Yeah, so that, um, space for announcements. It's a, a white lettering on a black background.
Okay, so there's no, because, because again, it's in French, so there's no, there's no lit up space on this, on this sign?
As far as I can tell, based on this plan, no.
Okay. Because I know when the, when the signs came for John twenty-third and whatnot. Especially John twenty-third. The, my concern then was all of a sudden this big lit up sign, uh, so we, we downsized that one there. You know, in respect to the, the housing, it is such close proximity, yeah, there's not as much out there, I get that, but I still want to just know how much. Um, so if there's no lit up, then I don't have an issue.
No, there, there, there's like an announcement board that they, it's like a digital. A digital screen, according to what they said, of twenty-two inches.
That's what I just. That is, that's how the announcements were changed, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I had been given the understanding that they had originally proposed. The page is now this way.
So, so they, they had advised us that it would not include any electronic elements, given the challenge. Um, that previous applications have had.
Perfect, and that's what I, that's what I.
They can do like a changeable letter sign.
Yep.
Um, it just wouldn't necessarily be, it may have some lighting, like some, some signs have lighting, they, they. Yeah, and that's my, the sign itself, my understanding is not, it's not an L E D.
So long as it's not L E D, then I have the.
Realistic.
There's less housing right there.
Just wondering if the process to retrofit that in the future, they still have to, they'd have to apply for permit and the bylaw exemption for that, if they wanted to retrofit, um, and. An announcement or electronic part in there.
So currently our sign by law, and again, we're, we're in the process of updating our sign by law, is not as clear as we would like it to be around the L E D signage. Um, they would require a, a. Sign permit to alter the sign if they were switching it to the L E D sign. Um, under kind of our revision process for signs, we're, we have, we have clear policies around the L E D signs. Um, so that it's clear what the maximum size is, where they can locate it, um, in different provisions of them, so we did. Close our, um, political patient, who's had a lot of feedback and lots of interesting proposals on regulations for L E D signs, so when we kind of. Drafting the new sign by law. Figuring together, we're going to look at some of those options, um, around L E D signage.
Okay, my concern would just be that we allow them to have a bigger sign now, and then they can come back later, and I guess we have to trust that that. By law will be approving in the future, you can keep this in mind. Uh, for the future, because I could see them coming back later on and saying it would be really nice if we put an illuminated part in there, it's just because Baskin is quite dark along there, and having anything illuminated there would really distract drivers, I think. So that's my own concern is that they might come back later and want to retrofit it.
So we could, the bylaw that's proposed, um, we could amend the wording specific and says that they're allowed the larger sign size. But not. Um, larger sign size.
That would be great.
I think we would have to bring that bylaw back at a separate meeting in that case, so we can see what you do.
Does that need to come back, actually, if we're already approving the fact that it can? Yeah, we can, we can approve it without the L E D and then give Alex direction to prepare it and print it and stuff.
We wouldn't have to permit it as a staff report, but I think the bylaw.
What's up? We can't amend it. You can amend it if you would like, but.
I think that's what we've got the appetite for. Counselor Turner.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to understand why, I mean. St. Joe's has a, like, an L E D dis, uh, display sign, so does John twenty-third has an L E D display sign. And I don't know why. The school, the school can't have one.
Because they're much smaller than this lot.
Not much. When you take the measurements. I mean, uh, driving around town after I read this bylaw. There must have been a lot of sign by law variances with the, the, most, most signs in town are larger, are larger than. What is allowed, so. I didn't know, so, I didn't know the current sign by law was so, so small. Like, if you go down any major, like Jamal's sign is bigger, Reed Brothers is bigger, Canadian Tire's sign is bigger, all those signs are bigger than a current bylaw now.
So I think the difference is the, the zoning, so this is the maximum sign. Size permitted in an institutional dome, um, and it tends to be smaller because institutional properties can sometimes be mixed into residential area. Um, whereas when you're looking at commercial property, they're in kind of commercial corridors, like along Daniel Street, um, where there's somewhat limited. Interface between those and low density residential uses, so there are different right now provisions for. Different types of zones, so the commercial zones allow for a different sign size rather than institutional zones.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
So we're in favor of what, what Chris was saying, but because it's going to be a school zone under authority with the flashing lights that you can't go through. There should be a way, but I can see Joseph got, or, uh. John twenty-third's got the temperature, what's happening, running through as I hit the stop sign, so I get to view that. I like to, personally, I could see that on Baskin to, for the Frank bones to say, hey, there's something happening there.
So the sign still currently as proposed does have an area for announcements, it's just going to be changeable letters rather than an L E D sign. So changeable letters, like a lot of the, um, black signage that you see where they've got the neon letters, they just have to take out the letters and put in the different letters for the message that they want. Um, so the letters themselves are not electronic or lit, they're just, they look like these fluorescent letters. Um, in this case, they're proposing white lettering, but. So they can still display a message, which is going to be an L E D.
So we ask, just for the slight exemption to size.
Criteria.
All in favor on that? And then opposed?
Sorry, can I just clarify what you're amending in the bylaw?
We are amending that there be no lighting, that it go back without, so that the size is requested. No L E D. Without, uh, sorry, yes, thanks. No, no L E D, because they may want to.
Light it, light it.
Just to specify it's on the sign itself, they can still do auxiliary lighting. So they can still employ an L E D lighting, which is not as part of the sign.
Now, do you need a move in a sector as amended, or?
Yes.
I would, simply so that we can have it go follow through with the bylaw, because bylaw says to enact the pass.
Okay.
The agenda, so without L E D. Okay.
Yeah, move in a sector as amended, Kenny, Councilman, Counselor Cooper, and in favor on the amended bylaw? And opposed? Okay, uh, no, please, uh, Counselor Turner is opposed.
Okay. And then we would go back to as amended, to the original as amended?
And.
So you always re, review them first, and then you go back to the original as amended?
Okay, and do we need a move or a second?
Already done, move in a second.
So now it's, it's all in favor.
As amended.
As amended.
Yeah.
Opposed?
We just voted for the amended.
That's right.
And now we have to vote on the amendments.
On your ears.
We always look for the amendment. And then you go back to the original. So we've amended the, the, um. The, uh, report to say that, so it will be reflected in the bylaw, but you always do the amendment and then you go back to the original as amended.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
So I'll.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor Turner. Okay. Alex? So, um, I can see on staff report, but the, um, uh, annual statement VCs.
That council received report number twenty-three dash zero six dash thirteen dash zero three's information. And that this annual statement of development charges be made available to the public on the town of our, our website or upon request.
Move her in a sector on that, please, Counselor Dino, Counselor Rinsdale, Ms. Jenner.
Well, so today I'm going to walk through the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, sorry, annual statement of development charges. So to give a little bit of background, development charges are fees collected from new development at the time of a voting permit is issued or occupancy. Um, municipalities do use these charges to help pay for the cost of infrastructure required as a result of new developments such as roads, parks, recreation, fire, as well as water and wastewater. Uh, most municipalities in Ontario use development charges to ensure that the cost of providing that infrastructure to service those new developments are not borne by the existing residents and businesses in the form of their taxes. So under section forty-three of the Development Charges Act, it does require the treasurer, uh, each year to give council a financial statement relating to the development charges by law and the reserve funds that were established under section thirty-three. And then the statement, we do have to make it available to the public and, um, the minister of municipal affairs and housing can always ask her to do it as well. So this is the annual statement covering, um, time of January to first to December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two timeframe. Um, and the D C charges established, um, these are the ones from the twenty eighteen development charges by law. Um, under Ontario Regulation eighty-two ninety-eight, that is what prescribes the detailed information that I have to include in the annual treasure statement. Um, and there was lots of amendments to the D C's, uh, act lately, and so recently, oh, right, eighty-two ninety-eight was also recently amended through the law. So to give a quick summary here, um, the twenty twenty-two development charges, uh, I always start up with that open balance, we opened with about five point two million dollars in our D C reserve. Uh, we collected, um, a little over a million dollars of, um, D C charges. Um, this is a new line, the next one here, development charge is receivable, um, so now, um, with those changes under the D C act, you have some developments. Um, that can pay over installments, so this D C charge is receivable is money, um, that is owed to the municipality that will come, um, for some of those future installment payments. Um, third line, we have investment and interest income that's earned by the reserve. Um, or interest on some of those D C charges, um, so we came out to about six point eight. In twenty twenty-two, we had disbursements coming out of the D C fund, uh, for projects of about one point three, we have always had our year-end reconciliation. Uh, at the end of the day, we closed the balance in the reserve fund, um, at the end of the year, a little over five point three million. Um, in the staff report, I included a number of appendices, so appendix A, um, I outlined the development charge funds that we collected. The development charge receivables, interest earned in disbursements, and it's all by different service categories, so that was appendix A. Um, appendix B, I outlined the detailed listing of all the development charge disbursements, and that was by those projects, um, and also by service category. And then appendix C, it also included, um, the annual amount, or sorry, amount of capital costs that were estimated. And the actual amounts incurred over the applicable term of the D C by law, so those three appendixes are attached to the, um, annual statement to give council a lot more information on various different, um, charges and the service categories that they fall under. Um, future policy considerations, so as I mentioned, the Development Charges Act, uh, we did recently have a significant number of amendments, uh, made by the province to the Development Charges Act. Including bill one oh eight, one thirty-eight, one ninety-seven to thirteen, one oh nine. Uh, made by the province to the Development Charges Act, including bill one oh eight, one thirty eight, one ninety seven to thirteen, one oh nine. Um, the most recent twenty twenty three development charges background study um has a good outline of those changes. Uh, and they've been incorporated to the new twenty twenty three DC bylaw. Um, this statement here, however, for the twenty twenty two amounts, we're still working off of the DC um bylaw from twenty eighteen. Um, however, we do have a requirement going forward to allocate funds, so annually next year, beginning of twenty twenty three. Municipalities are required to spend or allocate at least sixty percent of the monies in reserve at the beginning of the year. For some of the categories, so for water, wastewater and services related to a highway. So that's something that we'll see probably coming forward at budget time for council, I'll include a table at the back of the reserves and show those allocations for council. Um, in twenty twenty one, um, council did pass a resolution. Uh, authorizing that we could charge interest on development charges which are payable in accordance with section twenty six point one and twenty six point two of the Development Charges Act. Um, those are those ones that have those either rate freeze or those installment payments, so while we wait for that interest, it does get charged. Uh, once bill twenty three came through, um, the minister did set a maximum interest rate, um, that it would be the average prime rate plus one percent. And this maximum interest rate provision would apply to all installment payments and eligible site and is only available on amendment applications that occurred after November twenty eighth, twenty twenty two. So that now comes into effect. And with that, I think we open for any questions.
To go back to the sixty percent of our, of our reserves in twenty twenty three, we have to spend sixty percent of that five billion dollars?
It's spend or allocate, so for example, council, you have a very robust twenty year long range capital plan. Um, so right now, for, it's a pretty, um, I'm going to say a good exercise that I can just show at budget time that shows. Where in the next couple of years we'll be allocating um the DC monies to, because you already have the capital fund lined up in your. Long range capital forecast, so I don't see there being any issue getting that ten, that sixty percent threshold for allocation.
Answer questions straightforward. All in favor? Not opposed, thank you. Um, next up, uh, Jennifer, again, the biannual financial update.
The council will receive report number twenty three dash zero six dash twelve dash zero four's information. That that an adjustment be made for the twenty twenty three funding sources for the capital project, Daniel Street signalization, intersection realignment. And culvert replacement to reflect funding for the ground development, funding for Riker County twenty twenty three Canada. We need building fund grant volumes and capital expenditure reserve fund contributions as outlined here.
Move on to secondary. Counselor instead, Counselor Dino.
Very key, council. Um, so for the biannual financial update, so under the procedural bylaw, um, I do have under there for. Uh, myself to come forward to council with my annual financial reports. And the intent of these reports are to provide council with a clear picture of the town's financial status. Identify any financial matters of concern and update council on progress and any improvements made to date on any sort of finance related initiative. Um, so in the report, I do provide um a twenty twenty three year to date, so the year to date covers a five month period, so January to May. Um, and I'm showing here in the chart some budget to actuals, um, and I always like to show the, the prior year as well, so you can see the first couple lines of twenty twenty three. The bottoms are twenty twenty two, so that we can see that comparison year over year. Um, so for revenues, um, right now, um. We are sitting, uh, we're pretty much on target for revenues and expenses for twenty twenty three. You can see for revenues, forty four percent um at this time of the year, and that's the same as twenty twenty two, we're setting at forty four percent. A budget of revenues received at the same time of the year. Um, for expenses, uh, we are slightly higher in twenty twenty three, we're sitting at thirty nine percent um of budget expenses incurred compared to thirty six percent of twenty twenty two. And I'll speak to that a little bit more in the next slide. So so far here, I, I like my, by no person council to show you guys the information in a couple of different ways, because everyone likes to see it sometimes summarized differently, so. Um, this table here shows this, pretty much the same information in the first one, except all the amounts are netted together. Um, so you can see the year to date and the budget total shown as net amounts, which is basically your revenues minus expenses um for that respective time period. Um, and what I've done for council is the appendix A, the report then breaks out um this um table in the full detail. Where you can see all the revenues expensive by um each department category, if you want to look at it in full detail, this is more of the summarized table. Um, so while the expenses for twenty twenty three are slightly higher, um, right now, I've gone through all the numbers, I don't see any major concerns jumping out. I think it's more that I feel the twenty twenty two figures were a little uh lower, um, as opposed to the twenty twenty three values uh being high. Um, higher twenty twenty three expenses, but I did look at a lot of them related to um our fuller staffing complement. Twenty twenty two has some vacancies and now those are filled, so we're seeing um those expenses come through in twenty twenty three as they should. Uh, we do have some higher winter control expenses uh coming through um in twenty twenty uh three. Um, and we had a little bit of timing for just for the recreation program revenues, which I'll, I'll talk about in a sec. Um, touching back on the winter control and to really look at the specifics, uh, by the end of May, uh, we had um eighty percent of our winter control. Budget for twenty twenty three extended compared to about four, um, about fifty seven percent of the budget from twenty twenty two. Um, so there is still a healthy winter control reserve um to address, should there be any overages. Um, should, you know, when we get into Q four and we're looking at that October to December time period. Um, if we do have a substantial number of winter uh events at that time period, um, council does have a fairly healthy insurance or control reserve to address the overages. Um, I always like to dive into the water and wastewater revenues, just to make sure that we're, we're on target. Um, so looking at both of them, we are trending pretty similar to the twenty twenty two um year-to-date values, um, you can see. Um, uh, for water revenues for base and consumption, thirty five point uh two seven, so slightly higher from twenty three than the thirty four point uh one zero for twenty twenty two. Um, and almost identical, a little over thirty four percent for both twenty twenty three and twenty twenty two on wastewater, so that's good, we're getting some consistent trending. Uh, we do still continue, I always like to tell council about the, um, uh, you did install a number of water meters at that end of two thousand nine. Uh, every year as we get, we get closer to uh and end of life, we are, we are doing that uh meter replacement program and we are continuing to replace more and more. Uh, water meters over here. Um, and then touching back on the recreation program revenues, um, they do look a little lower in twenty twenty three, so you can see when you look at the back charts of my report about fifty two thousand. Compared to twenty twenty two, one twenty six. Um, however, the majority of this variance was just timing difference from when we recognized our uh registration revenues. Uh, so for example, um, had you included in the twenty twenty three numbers, can't right now, let's say you can't want to go, and some of the um. Other summer programming, it would have brought the twenty twenty three numbers up to one twenty one pretty much right. That was just a timing. Um, a timing that shows the differences there. Um, moving on to look at some other financial items, um, and the twenty twenty two audit financial statements were completed and adopted by council back on May eighth. Um, I'm always happy whenever the F Y Rs get submitted, have we submitted them back to the province on May twenty third prior to the May thirty one submission deadline? Um, the final twenty twenty three taxes by law was adopted by council also on May. Uh, we're getting ready to be issuing final property tax bills, um, they will be issued in July, have a few dates about thirty one and November thirty. Um, and we continue always to promote out um uh to property owners, we have over five hundred properties now signed up for installment or pre, a monthly pre authorized payments. So we always encourage property owners to sign up for that. Um, touching based on tax arrears. For the current year, uh, we issued forty one letters out to property owners who became two years in arrears. Uh, having to announce that only two of those forty one actually still remain outstanding uh with a certificate registered. Um, prior year properties, uh, we do still have three properties that remain eligible for tax sale scheduled for September twenty twenty three. Two of which are second tax sales, all in the unsuccessful twenty twenty two tax. Touching based on capital projects, twenty twenty three capital brand is pretty robust, uh, whenever we look at current and prior and some addition, we're about sixty one projects in the works right now. Uh, you add a lot together, it's about ten point eight in funding when we include prior year uh with funds that's that we're working with, uh, we have good progress being made. Uh, ninety two percent of all projects are already in progress, seventy five percent haven't completed or in the midst of completing the procurement uh process of our fee tenders or awards. Um, and while some twenty twenty tenors have come under budget, we are still seeing, I included a table uh in the report for council, we're still seeing a bit of that overall increase in tender costs for those large procurement items. Um. For twenty twenty four, we do have a small in the recommendation, just an adjustment to the funding sources for the Daniel E D stabilization and intersection realignment project. Um, I know, um, uh, the G M operations already brought the tender award forward to council. Um, now I just have to uh for my end to do the funding adjustment that allows the proper allocation of funding for the various funding sources. So I included in the report, um, I'm elect for council of just what those um little adjustments are, where you can see the differences. Uh, and also in the report, I mean, to council, any concerns um over the threshold that were made under delegation before. With that, I don't know if there are any questions by council may.
Just very small, a pre-operated statement for water and wastewater, do people just need a way to check uh the desk downstairs, or have they signed up for that?
Oh, if you go online on our website, there's a, um, an online uh forum that they can fill ready to. It works right down into the finance department, they can just sit through there, uh, for it, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Make all in favor of that? Many report. Okay. My report from last three weeks, because of course we, yeah, the extra region between. Uh, these are not chronological order. Uh, I have the pleasure of bringing greetings from council at the fire hall to celebrate a grant that uh. You received from Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation Canada, uh, the grant sixteen thousand nine hundred forty two dollars. Mr. and Mrs. Wasall, the owners of Firehouse Subs in Canada, attended and they provided fantastic food for the event. Uh, very unique tasting of the grants, supported the purchase of a forceful entry prop, and those tenants were able to see it in action as well as other training take place. Uh, great evening, thanks again to sponsors and for fires. Uh, I had a meeting with Lynn Smith, executive director of CPAN, along with um Chella uh Rektin, who is the program and project coordinator. Uh, they wanted to discuss some of their initiatives towards poverty issues and solutions. Great meeting, uh, we're definitely aligned on many of the issues, moves, challenges, of course, that are faced by our community and county. And I'm looking forward to supporting uh many of their law initiatives, they are, are starting to move forward. Uh, together with Counselor Cooper, I met with Cody and Vince Campanelli. Uh, well, this is mostly introductory meeting, they share concerns about. Some of you were too, you remember the private rules by law that had come for two years ago, I think, a year and a half ago. As well as um some concerns that they have with past the issues from prior. Given some future development that they are hoping to move forward with, so it was a positive meeting and, like I said, mostly an introductory one. Um, I had the pleasure of attending the uh two thousand three hundred and sixteen Army Cadet Annual Ceremonial Review. Where I had the privilege of bringing greetings from council and participate in um their inspection, it was my, my first. Receremonial review and it uh is kind of, which it said, it really is something special. Uh, afterwards, we have like reception and desk group discussion with their new members. I had the pleasure of bringing opening remarks and greetings from council to the Lions Guide Dog Walk, uh, your beautiful Saturday. Special thanks to all sponsors of that event and participants. Uh, I'd like to give a special shout out to uh Brayden Waterman in his beautiful dog, Innes. Together, they have raised over fifteen thousand dollars welcoming this event together, uh, for each of the seven years of the Lion Club, that's helped it, it's pretty spectacular. Uh, our agreement committee, including Counselor Vinsted and myself, met with Mayor McKenzie, Counselor uh Drum, along with. Our members of staff and some of that Brayside. The intention was to close off the population adjustments using the agreed to formula and numbers obtained through the recent census. A few questions, but given up early the formulas spelled out in the agreement, the meeting took less than half an hour. Uh, prior Palooza, I had the pure joy of welcoming residents and visitors to the park for prior Palooza last weekend. Our recreation team is so dang good that they were even able to order the perfect day in terms of weather. I can't give enough credit to the team that pulled this together, uh, much appreciation to staff, sponsors, volunteers. Uh, and just to give an indication of how valuable these things are with the, the community, I probably told all of you the story, because it, it. And it affected me, I walked about and I was chatting with uh some of the attendees and um to the way I'd say, you know. Have you been here before? Um, most had said yes, and one, one couple said, no, this is our first time, said already from Empire. And they said, no, we came from Ottawa. How did you, how did you hear about this? They said, well, we heard about it on the radio, and they fell so in love with Empire that they started to look at. They, they are seeing a couple who are looking at the downsides and moved to town, they have already started to look at it down, so. Uh, just kind of a, a neat connection, and it just shows you the kind of impact that some of these events have. Uh, we had our pride flag raising, uh, with members of council and staff, joined by many community members to raise the flag and support pride fund. Very well attended, I think the biggest group that we've had yet, and then we'll report the ongoing events in town through the month celebration. Uh, last Thursday, uh, most members of council were at the diet, doctor's dining duel. Can't read my own typing. Um, in support of the physician improvement efforts, we were treated to a piece of food and beverages for this important fundraiser, and it's always one that I look forward to attending. Many council members were, were newbies and who had not been there before, assuming we'll look forward to the next one, the next year, based on how much fun that was. Uh, on the weekend, I attended an event where I had the chance to uh meet, speak with mayors of Shawville and Clarendon. Surprisingly, the populations are only uh each of one thousand, but in fact, they each have councils same size as ours. Which, I don't know, there's a percentage here. One in every, uh, always a great learning opportunity, and I appreciated their openness and candor about the issues that they face. And lastly, um, this is the William Mayor's report, I'm going to sneak out the announcement, but um today. William Joseph Dino, um, received, he graduated with, with distinction. From Carleton University. Sharon. Does look like Billy, so congratulations, Sir Dino. All right, uh, moving along.
County clerk, uh, Rose Grumps has submitted her letter of retirement. The August session will be your last speed county council. The CEO Craig Kelly said that Rose has been the glue that has kept the corporation together for the past twenty five years. Uh, note, we've known that there, we've contacted our past Reeves and mayors that were part of the council, and they're aware that Rose has retired. County council adopted bylaw dealing with flexible work arrangements effective one July twenty twenty three. The flexible work arrangements will be implemented on a one-year trial basis. County council adopted bylaw authorizing a recreation agreement with the town of Arfara. Arfara District Museum Summer Experimentation Station. To provide subsidies or specialty resource funding for children's age six to twelve. Who are enrolled in an authorized recreation skill building program. The Arfara District Museum is offering an eight-week camp that takes place through the summer, Compressur Manager, Emily Stowell, for taking this happen. County staff were offered the opportunity to wear blue jeans on Fridays at a cost of two dollars. The collected money, two thousand dollars and seventy cents, figure out the seven cents. With the native to United Way East, Ontario Regional Director Jade Newman. A delegation from the Rensworth County District School Board made a presentation, printed materials out front. And the June meeting of operations to develop the property will be held at the township in the Cat Brayside, and we're going to tour and shed that lot.
Uh, do we have any committee report, Counselor Dino?
So the airport commission met June seventh at six thirty with a number of items that I wish to relay to council, so first, the flying breakfast, just as a reminder, is June seventeenth. Eight AM to twelve PM, there will be a Martian team that are going to direct where members of the public go, breakfast, shuttle access, accessible washrooms. On-site demonstration from Vintage Wings and other vendors of the airport, all for you to enjoy. And as always, members of council are welcome and encouraged to attend. Uh, there was a fuel update, uh, update to the credit card reader and pricing on comp services, looking at additional revenue streams. From additional fuel offerings, uh, on the manager's update, the property maintenance revenue is uh increasing as they. Offer that serviced and other hangar owners, uh, taking on additional float plane rev- fuel revenue streams. Uh, the airport now has a new dock with collaboration between Stevenson Fuels and the Airport Commission. Terminal credit card reader was upgraded, discussion did get underway on a potential code of profit for hangar owners. Accounting update, there was a discussion on the audit for twenty twenty three, and the commission did commence a discussion with Caitlin Cox at K P M G. And on the garage expansion update, the commission did pass a motion. Move forward on finalizing plans by garage expansion to house additional capital equipment. Then there may, winter maintenance equipment, sweeper, et cetera.
I just have a few updates.
I just have a few updates from the Armpire District Museum. The museum has undergone a facelift the past few months with new flooring installed in the back rooms, freshly painted walls and an additional washroom added, which will increase the rental occupancy to seventy persons. Over the past few months, the museum, with its newly renovated space, has served as a venue for weddings, a baby shower, an overnight sleepover camp by the Girl Guides, weekly visits by Little People's Program and ADHS Special Education Class, and after school Learn the Soul Program, and embroidery workshop, and for hosting the cultural night market organizing committee. The digitize digitization team have been working through some technical barriers, but have managed to photograph just under fifteen hundred cultural belongings. And a new digitization assistant will be starting shortly to join the team. And some upcoming events include Neighborhood Story Jam as part of Culture Connect on Saturday, June twenty fifth, starting at one PM. And an eight-week museum summer program starting Monday, July third, with a different experimentation station theme each week. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Tom.
Can we add that to councillor Tom? The emails and they're looking for cardboard boxes?
Yes, cardboard boxes and newspapers, national geographic cuttings, yes, for the.
Okay, moving along to correspondence and petitions.
That the correspondence package number I dash twenty-three dash two dash eleven being received is information and filed for. We're going to set that fee. Councillor Burnett, councillor Lynch. And questions, comments, councillor Lynch.
Thank you, Mayor. On page eight, if you have loved ones at the Fairview Manor Retirement Home in Almont, you'll be glad to hear that the Ontario government has invested eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty dollars for two projects that are specialized in thoracic equipment and supplies of IV fusion class. On page thirty-six, the Ontario government is now permitting persons fifteen years old, down from sixteen to be lifeguards. On page thirty-eight, as of zero one June, the Ontario government is now requiring at-risk employers to ensure their workplaces have a life-saving nalox on kit on hand and workers training on how to use them. To the CEO, do we have these kits and has anyone been trained on?
Yes, actually, all all our facilities have kits available and training was provided to about twenty employees who received Thursday training last fall. And more employees will be trained again this year.
Thank you. And lastly, on page forty, good news for trained immigrant living in Ontario. The Ontario government has banned the regulated professions from requiring Canadian work experience in more than thirty regulated professions. The first ones are the professional engineers are the first association to remove it from applications for Ontario. Thank you.
So all favor on that one? Okay, and next one, please.
That the correspondence package number A dash twenty-three dash two dash zero nine, you see, the recommendations outlined are core for council consideration. We're going to get back here for that one, please. Councillor Cooper, councillor Toner. Questions?
No, Karen. No, over. All in favor of it? Um, so I know that we need to pull the first one out due to Q and A, just for councillor Cooper. Are there any others that anyone want to pull out? No.
Well, I voted no. It has to be consistent.
Okay, which one was that?
Two.
Assigned. Okay, so we'll pull one and we'll pull two. So we'll do the the other ones first. Please go back to this.
That that bylaw number, oh, sorry, that the following bylaws, you're buying up in the past. Bylaw number seven three nine seven dash twenty-three, appointment of town clerk, Shelley McKenzie. And bylaw number seven three ninety dash twenty-three, amend the hiring policy, volunteer firefighters.
Over and set for those who please. Councillor Deneau, councillor Grinstead. All in favor for those, none are opposed. Thank you. And then the first one.
The bylaw number seven three five dash twenty-three, lifting of zero point three meter reserve, Marshalls Bay Meadows, be hereby enacted and passed.
And a mover and a setter for that one, please. Councillor Grinstead, councillor Toner. All in favor? Opposed? Great. Item two.
Which is bylaw number?
Seven three nine six.
Bylaw number seven three nine six dash twenty-three, decline by law exemption to forty Vaston Drive West.
Mover and the setter, please. Sorry, all in favor. Do you want to record a vote on that one?
And it is as amended.
As amended. Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Deneau.
Yes.
Councillor Cooper.
Yes.
Councillor Toller.
No.
Councillor Burnett.
Yes.
Councillor Grinstead. Yes. County councillor Lynch.
Yes.
And there we go. Yes. And now we are at resolutions. The council of the preparation of the town of Armpire received a municipal grant policy application from the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance. And whereas the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance is a group of volunteers promoting safe and healthy active transportation in the Ottawa Valley, therefore be a result that council supports the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance request by providing in-kind support through waiving the rental fees for the Nixley Centre Community Hall valued at approximately four hundred and fifty dollars for their trails. Trail Towns Conference event to be held on September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And further that the Ottawa Valley Cycling and Active Transportation Alliance, we advise that advise that it is mandatory to carry sufficient liability insurance and have the town of Armpire as an additional insured for the event.
And we're going to do these all separately, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, so mover and a setter for that one, please. Councillor Lynch, councillor Cooper, all in favor.
Second is the council of the corporation of the town of Armpire received the municipal grant policy application from the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Programming. And whereas the Armpire McNab Freyside Seniors at Home Program is a community support agency offering an umbrella of programs for individuals and with special needs and individuals over the age of fifty-five. Therefore, be a result that council supports the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Program request by providing in-kind support through waiving the rental fees for the Nixley Centre Community Hall with a value of approximately four hundred and fifty dollars for their Christmas craft fair to be held on November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. And that they be advised that it is mandatory to carry sufficient liability insurance and have the town as an additional insured.
We're going to set for that one, please. Councillor Deneau, councillor Grinstead, all in favor. What was carried?
And by McNab Freyside Seniors at Home, the council of the corporation of the town of Armpire received municipal grant policy application from the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Programming. But whereas the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Program is a community support agency offering an umbrella of programs for individuals with special needs and individuals over the age of fifty-five, therefore be resolved that council supports the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Program request by providing in-kind support for waiving the rental fees for the Robert Simpson Park valued at approximately four hundred and forty-three dollars for their annual memorial butterfly release event to be held on August twentieth. And that, further that the Armpire Freyside McNab Seniors at Home Program, we advise that it is mandatory to carry sufficient liability insurance and have the town of Armpire as an additional insured for the event.
These councillor connections, councillor Cooper, all in favor. We're going to carry. Thank you.
And the council of the corporation of the town of Armpire received the municipal grant policy application from United Women, United Church Women of Grace City Andrews United Church. Whereas as a charitable organization, the Saint Grace and Andrew, you know, the church is an eligible community organization under the municipal grants policy. Therefore, be a result, council supports the Saint Andrews United Church request by providing in-kind support for waiving the rental fees for the Nixley Centre Community Hall valued at approximately four hundred and fifty for their Christmas craft market to be held on November fourth, twenty twenty-three. And further that they be advised that it is mandatory to carry sufficient liability insurance and have the town as an additional insured for the event.
Councillor Grinstead, councillor Deneau, all in favor.
Finally, and the last one is that council of the corporation of the town of Armpire received the municipal grant policy application from the Rotary Club of Armpire. Whereas the Rotary Club of Armpire raises funds which go for many community projects in the greater Armpire in greater Armpire area, including families in need. Therefore, be resolved that council supports the Rotary Club of Armpire's request by providing in-kind support for waiving fees for the special event license of twenty-five dollars, the rental of the Robinson Park gazebo a value of approximately four hundred and forty-three dollars, as well as providing town staff support for the setup and tear down for the Butter Tart Festival to be held on August twentieth, twenty-three. And further that the Rotary Club be advised that it is mandatory to carry sufficient liability insurance and have the town of Armpire as as an additional insured for the event.
We're going to set from here on up. Councillor Burnett, councillor owner, all in favor. Sorry, thank you. Item number sixteen, we've got announced. Sure enough.
Do you want to echo the mayor's comments on prior Palooza? I did, I've heard nothing but praise from residents on how well the event went. And that is again on the backs of our great recreation department for the amazing job of planning the event. The Armpire Market had debuted June fourth with weekly theme markets happening in succession to September twenty-fourth. And you can see more information on the Armpire website or the Armpire Market Facebook page. The next cultural night market meeting is June twentieth at six PM at the museum, comes with the airport. And this is sort of locally related, but on June first, I had the good fortune of attending the Algonquin Nursing Class of twenty twenty-three pitting ceremony. Big congratulations to Monica Deneau on officially becoming an RPM and for all the hard work that went into getting that degree. This coming from a very proud big brother. There were about a hundred students that received their nursing pin and gave their night in the jail home. And I know that with all the news, even locally on healthcare, the theme generally is not a positive one. But after seeing not only the number of graduates, but also the road it took to get there, like during the pandemic, I'm more confident in the future of nursing from it. And I did graduate today. I promise. That was my announcement.
Councillor Cooper.
I just have something to share. I received an official summoning statement from the Armpire Lions Club that I am to appear before the presiding judge on Saturday, the seventeenth of June. That's a Saturday at one PM. The Armpire Lions Club jail bill, I am innocent. I have not committed anything and any charges the Lions Club is bringing before me are trumped up, I guarantee it. That'll be a giant tiger parking lot, Elgin or AD Elgin Street West. It would be there to be dealt with according to the law. And I've been told that I have to raise, as do all the jail bill people, three hundred dollars to be released within thirty minutes. So do support this for anyone that doesn't know about the jail and bail. It is a fundraiser for the Lions Club who do excellent work in our community and all the money goes directly to that, goes towards our Armpire Lion Club projects. So do show up and see who has been unfairly accused and persecuted and locked up because you might be surprised as soon as in there.
We had to get you. What is that to keep you in?
Well, you could, you could give double. I think you have to give double if you want to keep me in. So that's how it usually goes. And just to echo councillor Deneau's sentence, there's been a lot of really positive discourse in the community surrounding our events that we have. The market, the pride Palooza, and just, it's a very good feeling having such a dark time with COVID, with everything in there. And people are usually not shy to share things they're unhappy about. In this case, people are really catching people doing something right. And I just want to applaud any community members that are going over their way to recognize specifically our town staff who work very hard and often their job goes just unthanked and taken for granted. But people are very vocal about how nice things are running. So I just want to give a shout out to anyone who's taken the time to say something nice because it does make a difference. Thank you.
Just to follow up on councillor Cooper, our fire chief is going in as well. So.
It might be my soulmate.
You know, so you have to make a decision where your money's going. Councillor fired. Congratulations and apologies to Jim Flowers for me not attending the sixty-fifth birthday and his fifty years of business of Jim's Autumn Glass and Upholstery, which was held on the third of June. We were prior Palooza all day. Good news was Santa arrived. And he visited along with the GP and Rappel Dofflin, favorite of the Armpire Region as well. Congratulations to the thanks of Columbus Council on their hundredth anniversary, which was held last Saturday evening. Councillor Deneau and I attended. To follow up on the major mayor's comments and the doctor's dining duel. There were eight duelists. Doctor Gordon with Annette Charbonneau from Charbonneau Catering. She was the overall winner. Doctor Garcia with Manny Miesian family came in second place. Doctor Morrison with Andy Marcus from the Babbling Verme was the people's choice. Doctor Suzuki with James Reddick from Aspire Island View. Doctor Gordon Kai Dao from Cold Bear Brewery. Doctor Fishman with Nick White from the Redneck Bistro. Doctor Becker with Aaron Roberts from Urban's Pancake Steak and Lying. Doctor Veal, the dentist, with Graham O'Pon Mighty Fine Foods, which is on Atawaska, and they served mushrooms on a cracker of some sort. Next year, he's going to be priestess. Sample refreshments were provided by Gold Bear Brewing Company and the Farm Beach Craft Cider. Of note, with with a six-course meal for six people at your house, it was auctioned off for, the drumroll, nineteen hundred dollars. And Lynn was sitting neck to the person that was bidding. Congratulations to Ted and Bernice Brown on celebrating their fiftieth anniversary. I know it's been mentioned before, but I'd like to commend our recreation public for staff for the hard work that ensured Rockford Simpson Park was ready for prior Palooza and it lived up to its name of being the jewel of the Ottawa Valley. Like the mayor and and others have talked about, we were there for seven o'clock to put up our our gazebo as per normal. The place was immaculate. The grass was cut. There was no garbage or no steel wheels. It was just picture perfect. And the concerts in the park features the Hertz. It's this Sunday from two to four. And lastly, congrats to our Rensworth County Senior Games for holding the pickleball at the Nixley Center, which we had the privilege of issuing out the medals to. Thank you.
Councillor.
Yeah, just just one, three weeks ago. Ted Graham, he was a resident of Armpire, a war veteran of the Korean War and a teacher at the Armpire High School. He passed away and he was also the caretaker and the founder of the plants and the flowers at Legion Park. So I just wanted to send condolences to his family and thank him for all of the work he's done on EDS.
With that announcement, I want to welcome to the chambers tonight our brand new newest employee, our new clerk, Shelley McKenzie, coming to us via birth Carlton Place and now joining us here in Armpire to take over the shoes of of our clerk who will be the U.S. at the end of the month. That's all appointed by bylaw tonight. That'll take effect on July first. When she's officially responded into the chair, but we're welcome, Shelley, and want to make sure that the public is aware that she's joined us and we welcome her onto our staff and as part of our team.
Shelley. Turn to believe, or this is the second.
I know, which is why I'm stumbling over. Getting ahead of myself.
You may sit very close to her the next time.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. No questions for media, particularly or otherwise. So we've got two closed session, the closed session matters. So if you could have a.
Sure. That council meet in closed session to discuss one matter regarding personal matters about an identifiable individual including municipal or local board employees, pursuant to section two thirty-nine, two C of the Municipal Act two thousand and one as amended for secondary school bursaries and two matters regarding a proposed or pending acquisition of or disposition of land by the municipality, Landstone, Gannagale Street and Galvin Street.
Over and setter, please. Councillor Cooper, councillor Burnett. Favor on that.